Roll call, Kate, please.
Nathan Long.
Here.
Doug Bryson.
Here.
Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Jim Davis.
Here.
Don Williams.
Here.
And Bruce Robinson and Sean Kidd are both absent and excused.
All right, any agenda changes or revisions?
No agenda changes, I just want to point out that the hearing for Lincoln Palisades PUD is -- request had been to postpone that until September 16th, and for the Logan Park annexation, and PUD request is to postpone that until August 19th, and you have those later in the agenda.
So do we need some separate motions now to go ahead and?
I don't think anybody is here for them.
Anyone here to speak on those?
We got the request from -- these postponements are at the request of the applicant, not the city, and we got them quite late, and there really wasn't time to mail out a change of date. We did that once, I think, but we got this late, it just wasn't practical to send it out, it wouldn't have been in a timely -- arrived in a timely manner.
I'm looking for some guidance here then, since?
Well, I'm just -- when it comes up on the agenda, you can do the continuances then. Now, if the person who's here wants to speak, they can speak, but it's not going to be part of the record of those hearings.
Okay. Did you understand that, ma'am? Okay. All right, then, we'll pick that up. All right, then, minutes, you've all received the minutes, except a motion to approve minutes for July 1st, 2014?
I make a motion to approve the minutes, July 1st.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So moved. All right, public comments on non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing, please limit comments to three minutes per speaker. Speakers should keep in mind that they are being broadcast on live television. No takers. All right, final orders, resolutions, and written communications, we have none. Special order of business, opportunity for public comment, proposed substantial amendment to the amended and restated year 2000 development urban renewal plan. The proposed amendment is to add approximately 34.5 acres to the urban renewal area. That's what I have, so, Kurt, you're up.
Good evening, I'm Kurt Olson, and I'm with the director of Lincoln City Urban Renewal Agency, and as you know, the agency is moving through the process to amend our plan to add some additional area to our district. This change to the plan will allow the agency to construct some very important public works projects, especially in the north end of the city, and in addition, it opens the agency's economic development loan and grant programs to some additional businesses and properties and organizations within the city. With us this evening to explain the process is, in more detail, is Elaine Howard, who's guiding us through that process.
Good evening. I'm Elaine Howard, I'm the consultant helping the city on the substantial amendment to an urban renewal plan. A substantial amendment to an urban renewal plan by statute has to be done in the same manner as the adoption of an original urban renewal plan, which means it has to be started by the urban renewal agency, go to the planning commission, be heard by the county commission, and be voted on by the city council on a non-emergency ordinance that's notice to all citizens in Lincoln City. So this is that planning commission portion of the substantial amendment. The statutes are unclear about the actual role of the planning commission, it says has to be presented to the planning commission, and so the role that's been established just through time is that there has to be a finding in the ordinance that adopts a substantial amendment, that the amendment conforms to the city's comprehensive plan, and since the planning commission is the entity that understands and works with the comprehensive plan, it's become or developed the role of the planning commission to make that motion or to make that finding that the amendment actually conforms to the comprehensive plan. So that was what was laid out in the staff report, and that's what I'll go through this So as Kurt said, this is a minor amendment, in February, the city council passed a resolution to allow for the extension of urban renewal financing and for some revenue sharing with the taxing jurisdictions, and there was a lot of public process and meeting with taxing jurisdictions at that time to make sure everybody was on board with that, and that passed with no opposition from any taxing jurisdictions, and so this is the implementing part of that. It allows for the urban renewal agency to do additional projects and to have additional monies to allocate to projects that are within the urban renewal area and some portions of property that were not in the urban renewal area. So specifically, what this amendment does is adds that property on which some of those projects will be done to the urban renewal area. So it's adding 34.51 acres, 29.19 of that is in parcels, the rest in right-of-way. In Oregon, you may only have 25% of your total acreage in urban renewal and up to 25% of your total assessed value, and this amendment meets those statutory requirements. So on these maps and in the maps in the packet you got, you can see, barely, but you can see, the orange, the orange is the additions. So because your urban renewal area is so long, it's impossible to get the entire area on one map, so this is starting from north to south and shows the urban renewal area. So you can see the road that goes north, the road that goes south there, and this area, again, there's right-of-way, and here, and you can see some parcels that are adjacent there. Usually, if those parcels are involved, it's because they've either wanted to be involved in any one of the urban renewal agency's loan programs, or the city thinks that maybe there's an opportunity for them to be involved in one of those programs in the future. So here, again, you can see there are some specific parcels that are adjacent to the existing area. This is the Nell Scott, again, just small parcels as you move down. So the changes that were made in the plan are very minor, other than adding the properties. We did go through the plan to update it to make sure if there is anything that was updated within statutes or legal actions that have taken place since the last update, so we updated those. So in the actual plan, the information that we added was in section 400, added information about the conformance with the comprehensive plan, and basically, that's the same verbiage that was in your staff report tonight that we'll go through. There was one additional zoning category that wasn't listed in the original plan that we added in, in section 500. In section 600, we added the potential of doing workforce housing within the limitations of the agency, so that was something that was talked about in the actions in February, so we wanted to make sure that was actually written within the plan. And section 700 was also updated, and then a new legal description. There are other minor typos that we found within the plan, and we updated those at the same time. So the projects that will be the projects going forward for the urban renewal plan are listed here, you can see that there are three, kind of see, the second, third, and fourth are in bold, those are projects that are in areas that were not in the urban renewal plan, that now will be in the urban renewal plan if this is passed. The other projects are all projects that are in, within the existing boundaries of the urban renewal area. While we're here, if you have any questions about any of those projects, I'm sure Kurt could address those, so we'll stop for a minute if you want to ask anything on those.
Quick question, can you define workforce housing for me?
Want me to?
Please do.
Workforce housing is housing that is at a level that your general work, it's usually rental housing, and it's for people who cannot afford to buy a home of their own, they live and work and live in your community, hopefully, you want them to live in your community and be able to afford rents, so they're potentially at a lower rent level than the more, the housing with higher amenities, or, so the reason you want to do that is you don't want people having to drive long ways to get to their jobs within your community, so if you're able to provide housing at a level that will help support the people who work in your restaurants or in the tourist attractions and your retail outlets in the city, so that's what workforce housing is.
How do you, I know you can't say guarantee, but how do you, how do you know that will happen?
Usually, I mean, workforce housing is a goal that a lot of cities are starting to adopt, so it's something relatively new, other than in the larger cities like City of Portland. The City of Portland, if they participate in workforce housing, they have strict requirements for what the rent levels will be, and the rent levels may not exceed those levels during the time that there's assistance. The state of Oregon has some assistance for housing developments, and they have similar kinds of contractual agreements that the rents have to stay within certain levels. So if the city decided to participate in some way in workforce housing, they would probably also want to have some covenants that the housing rent level stay at a specific level to be able to receive any kind of assistance from the agency.
Okay, and do we have anything like that currently here?
I'm not sure if, if I, if anything, nothing comes to mind. I think we probably do, but I'm trying, I can't think of what.
So it's rent-controlled housing?
You could put it like that, you could put it like that.
It's probably more incentive partnershiped housing. You know, we may, the agency, for example, may own some property, and we may be able to, we may discount the property or just lease the property so that the developer, those costs the developer doesn't have to absorb so that they can have lower rents, and sort of the agreement would be, we will discount this property or we will lease it to you for a reasonable price, so, with the idea that you will then provide housing at a lower cost. Or, or the planning department may be able to allow additional units over and above what would normally be allowed.
There's a state statute that would prohibit you from imposing a condition on rents and income levels, however, the exception is you can use incentives, contractual negotiated development agreement, for example, in order to provide those kind of incentives. Usually, what you'll do is give somebody a density bonus in exchange for an affordability covenant. So you give them more units, they commit to making sure that the houses are either sold or rented at a certain level, and there's some formula that's usually used to describe that. It's different for low-income and affordable workforce housing, different definitions.
How is that negotiated in later years, then? How do you?
Usually, the covenants go for 20 or sometimes 30 years, it depends on the program, on the incentive. And it's a covenant runs with the land.
And it may not be that the entire development is covered by that covenant, it may be that a certain number of units are provided.
For example, in Ashland, one of the annexation criterion is that you're, if you're going to be annexed, you negotiate some level of workforce or affordable housing and commit to some percentage of the units that are coming into the city to be affordable.
And they're doing that now?
Yes, we don't have anything like that in our code, and annexation being of a more negotiated nature, that's how you can do it in that situation.
All right, thank you.
Quick question, lift station, am I understanding that to be like a sewer pumping station, or am I?
That's correct, and we call them lift stations because that's actually what they're doing, is lifting it up to the next level so that it could be gravity again, yeah.
Okay.
But you're correct, it's a pump station.
It's good to know what I'm talking about, thank you.
And the reason the lift stations are so important is because they allow for, there are certain lift stations in Lincoln City that are, are at capacity, so development cannot occur on some of the vacant land if those lift stations aren't improved, so it will allow for development to occur where it may not be able to occur unless those lift stations are improved. We typically, with the planning commission, don't delve into the financial implications other than to just talk to them so that you know what they are. Urban renewal is guided by a maximum indebtedness, that's the controlling feature of urban renewal plans, so urban renewal ends for a city when their maximum indebtedness is reached. This does not increase your maximum indebtedness, the maximum indebtedness that you've had in your plan remains the same, you have a remaining maximum indebtedness of just under $7 million. Your total maximum indebtedness for this area is $43 million. When they did the minor amendment in February, it specified that of the tax increment revenues that come in, that 20% of those revenues will go to the urban renewal agency, but 80% of those revenues will be released to the taxing jurisdictions. So that's a change in urban, how urban renewal works, it used to be that you could never release any of your tax increment to the taxing jurisdictions, in 2009, the legislation on that changed, so you're now able to do that. And so when the city and the agency negotiated with the taxing jurisdictions to make the urban renewal area go longer, to be able to use that additional $7 million of maximum indebtedness, they negotiated releasing 80% of that increment to the taxing jurisdiction. So that's a huge bonus to those taxing jurisdictions, and the amount of money that they'll be receiving, because usually, they would get no money off of the tax increment. Do you all understand how tax increment financing works, or should I go through that really quickly?
Nope. I would like just a primer.
Sure. So, at the point that an urban renewal area is established, the property within that urban renewal area is assessed by the county assessor on whatever the value is at that time, and the assessor establishes what's called a frozen base assessed value of that area. And all of the taxes off of that frozen base assessed value continue going to all the taxing jurisdictions, but any growth over the years in that assessed value, the taxes off of that growth goes to the urban renewal agency. So for the last years while urban renewal has been going in Lincoln City, the growth from the time the area was established, the taxes off that have gone to the urban renewal agency, and that makes up that $43 million over the lifetime of urban renewal. In 2009, some legislation was changed to allow cities to do something called under levy, which means that they can decide not to take the full amount of that growth. And so what Lincoln City decided to do, they wanted to be able to do those lift stations and some of those other projects, they had remaining maximum indebtedness within their plan, so they talked with the taxing jurisdictions and said, could you allow us to continue urban renewal? We would like to continue it, we'll give 80% of that growth back to you and just use 20% to finish off these projects on the list.
Okay, and then just taxing jurisdictions?
City, county, library, fire district.
Got it, okay.
Fire district, part of the city here, no, they're separate, fire district.
Yeah, they're separate, so they're a taxing district, yeah.
Schools, community college.
Okay, thank you.
The things that show up on your taxes.
Right, right. Thank you.
And, and just as a point of reference, so currently, our tax increment annually is approaching, or just slightly over $2 million, so by, instead of taking that $2 million, we're going to be giving back to, back to, releasing back to the taxing districts about 1.6 million, if my arithmetic is correct.
Right.
And only be collecting a couple, $400,000 instead. And by, and we can do that by then, by extending the district out another 10 years, and that will give us enough money to do those projects, because those projects don't have to come online next year, and you can't really do $7 million worth of projects in a year or two. So this gives us time to do it and enough funding to be able to do it, and allows the taxing districts to recoup quite a bit of money that they were anticipating.
Great.
Quick question, urban renewal districts, I would assume in my mind that over a period of time, the area would be in fact renewed, and then the space would be lessened, but I see that we're increasing our boundaries of urban renewal over a period of time, and I guess the question comes to my mind, are we not completing projects that would then take some of those areas out of urban renewal, or is that a bad concept in my mind?
Well, it would sort of be counterproductive to the effort. If you put in the effort to renew an area and increase the tax base of the area, and then you remove it from there and you don't collect the taxes, then it's going to be hard to continue the program into the future. So the idea of the program is that the work you do increases the tax base, which generates more revenue so that you can continue to do the projects that, because that's the only way you could do the project.
Let me try to answer to you. So, at the time that they made this decision to release 80% of the increment, they could have done that a different way and released 80% of the assessed value, it would have kind of roughly done the same thing, but the reality is there are still properties within the whole area that want to take advantage of their storefront loans or their energy efficiency loans, so if they keep that area together and allow access to those programs, then businesses can still benefit from those, and you're accomplishing the same task by releasing 80% of the increment. Does that make sense?
So possibly, parts of what we saw in the maps of urban renewal districts are in fact, have been brought up to code and are looking really good, but they're part of the taxing entity still, so we keep them there.
Correct, correct. And I think accomplish the same thing by doing the under levy and adding the 80%, giving the 80% to taxing jurisdictions. So the part that we hope you're most concerned with is the conformance with the comprehensive plan. So the way we do this is just go through the different goals in your comprehensive plan and look at the amendment and see where or how it complies or conforms with your comprehensive plan. So the first goal in your comprehensive plan is citizen involvement, and its goal is to develop a citizen involvement program which ensures the continued participation of citizens in the land use planning process. The policy is Lincoln City shall assure that a reasonable effort is made to encourage the opportunity for citizens to attend public meetings. So the public meetings, the urban renewal agency was a public meeting a couple of weeks ago, this meeting tonight was advertised and is a public meeting, the city council meeting that happens in August is a public meeting, and it will be noticed, like I said at the beginning, to all citizens. It is an actual hearing, so anybody can come in and testify if they want to, and the city is really good about putting information up on their website about this amendment.
If you notice.
Yeah, that, I, I'm, so the second goal that this pertains to is public services and utilities. The goal in your comprehensive plan is to plan and develop a timely, orderly, and efficient arrangement of public facility and services which complement the area and serve as a framework for urban and rural development. So the main parts of the projects of the plan that meet that particular goal are those lift station upgrades, and those upgrades will allow the ability to develop in a more tight manner within your area, within the urban growth boundary, the properties that are not developed at this point, so allow you to fill your urban growth boundary area before having to develop outside. Next goal is housing, your goal is to provide for the housing needs of all citizens, so the project that was talked about and that we talked about a little bit just a minute ago is to partner in workforce housing, and that upgrading of utilities and transportation networks will also help to stimulate housing within undeveloped and underdeveloped areas. The next goal is economy, your comprehensive plan says to support the tourist industry and achieve a degree of diversity in the community, which will allow a balanced economy that will in turn support an adequate levels of service for all members of the area. The policy is Lincoln City shall explore incentives for economic development in order to expand and increase the productivity of commerce and industry. So again, to be able to do that, it would be good to have housing for your workers, and then also, again, the greater development capacity due to the infrastructure upgrades that are on that project list, so both the transportation improvements and the lift station upgrades. The next goal is aesthetics, to develop a livable and pleasing city which enhances man's activities. Allison and I didn't particularly like the man's activities, but that's okay, man's activities while protecting the exceptional aesthetic quality of the area. So one of the programs that will allow to be continued and allowed to be used in the new areas that will be added is the facade improvement program, which has been used in Lincoln City and helps to improve the look and feel of your city. Transportation, to provide a safe, convenient, and rapid transportation network to facilitate the movement of goods and people, and the, there are projects within the plan that are definitely transportation improvements, so they allow for the transportation improvements within the area. The next goal is energy, to conserve energy, and properties being added to the area will have access to the energy efficiency loan program that the city runs through their urban renewal. So the next steps in this process is tomorrow night, here, there'll be a briefing to the Lincoln County Commission, they don't vote on this, they don't have a requirement to vote, it's just required to give them a briefing. There will be the super notice to all the Lincoln City property owners, on August 11th is the city council hearing where people can come to testify, and August 25th, the city council will vote on a non-emergency ordinance. And we have a time for questions, and then I have a potential motion if you already been, to look at what the wording is and what kind of motion we would like you to adopt if you so desire.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
You did say that introducing a new zone?
We aren't introducing a new zone, and I forget which zone, there was one, it was just one of your existing zoning categories that wasn't already identified in your urban renewal plan, so of the property that we added in, it was zoned something different than properties that were already in the urban renewal, and I forget exactly which one it was, do you remember, Allison? I think Allison will look that up for us. So it's not adding a new zone, it's just, there's a requirement in the urban renewal plan that you have to specify what all of the existing zones are within the urban renewal areas, and one of the properties being added was a type of zone that wasn't already specified.
Would that be the roads-in area?
You know, I, which zoning? Oh, county zoning for roads-in.
Thank you.
Good call.
Other questions?
Any questions?
A curiosity question, so, tourism group.
Mm-hmm.
I was curious, is there a category for properties?
There are commercial properties within the urban renewal boundary, and I'm not sure how many light industrial.
There, there, there isn't, one of the projects in our plan, which are general categories, not specific projects, doesn't refer specifically to the increase of light industrial. Our plan is definitely a tourism-based plan, and so there are, there are many things in there that just go towards livability, like sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and all that kind of stuff, but then it goes on and says information kiosks, parks, you know, and, yeah, parks and other types of visitor amenities, more so than increasing industrial.
There's no classification?
No, and in fact, there wasn't even a classification for, for economic development in the plan at all, and it's only, and in the last time we did a substantial amendment, we decided to add that, and that was, you know, just about four, four or five years ago, we added it, and then that's when we were able to start adding some additional loan programs that could help those sorts of things, so that we do have the ability to assist with if someone came in to do some light industrial and it was in, within the urban renewal district. We have many, we have a lot of abilities to help them, but it doesn't specify it as a, as a project.
Erd drive?
Mm-hmm.
Companies out, that doesn't fall into the urban renewal growth boundaries at all, does it?
Correct.
As you. Because it seems like if we need more money, because that's one.
Yeah. It absolutely has. And in fact, there has been talk about forming a second urban renewal district just to serve that area when it would... When it's annexed to the city. Currently, as you know, most of that land is not in the city limits. It's in the county. So, you can't... The county could form an urban renewal district up 23rd Street. But the city, it would be more difficult for the city to do it outside the city's limits. But if the city annexes it, then it makes sense to include an urban renewal program in order to be able to provide the infrastructure out there.
Comes from businesses in the area. I know auto repair shops. Tourist businesses having repair shops and some... Knowing we don't enough, what I can consider light-based insight. You know, we're kind of forcing businesses to go lead town that have those type of... There is anything in your...
Yeah, it's not... It's more of a function of the Planning Commission and Planning Department than it is the Urban Renewal Agency to talk about how much industrial land is zoned in the city. But like I said, we're poised to help. If industrial does come, there are things that we can do to help. Especially now that we have these additional loan programs.
I would like that very much.
I might mention that we do have our planning for the Gap project that should be starting soon. It's an effort that is going to include 23rd and about, I think, 150 acres around in the Nell Scott area. We have a grant from the Transportation and Growth Management Program to hire consultants to help us with designing a neighborhood that would include industrial uses as well as commercial and residential. So, the... An urban renewal district might be an implementation tool that you could recommend to implement the plan once it's done. So, we will be working on that.
That is the area we toured together, correct?
Yes, yes, we did.
Other questions?
I have one. I think you called it Gold One. Citizen involvement?
Yes.
Well, reading this, because I was part of this in 2000. We had a urban renewal advisory board that worked along and made goals. How come we didn't do that process this time? It says the citizen is supposed to be involved in the planning stage, not just the approval stage.
A couple of things. At that time, you probably didn't have an urban renewal agency or you were working with an urban renewal agency. So, you now have an urban renewal agency that takes some of that responsibility of what... When plans are originally started, an agency a lot of times doesn't exist. So, once you have the agency, they take on that role. But there wasn't an advisory committee set up for this specific amendment.
Right. Yeah, as you know, the advisory committee was set aside and the city council became the advisory committee for the agency again. And at this point, we did quite a bit of outreach for citizen involvement, but mostly the things that were affected were the things were affecting the taxing districts and not the individual citizens. There was quite a bit of outreach that we did with specific property owners in the district in order to see whether or not they had an interest of being added in or taking advantage of the loan programs. The Economic Development Toolbox, we call it. There's five or six loan and grant application available now. And we still have several that we want to bring forward. And so, we have had some discussion with those that would be specifically affected by either not being in or being in. And virtually everyone wanted to be in and be able to take advantage of that.
Okay, so they were notified. So, people were notified or you went to see them?
Well, we knew that which properties specific... Mostly, like you saw, most of them were on Highway 101 that were left out. And we continually got questions from people, "Why is my property left out? I mean, it needs help." Well, and the reason was because in 1988, somebody decided it didn't need help. And that's when the plan was started. And they went through and they only brought in properties that really could benefit from the... From having urban renewal available to them. So, for example, lumbermen's. In 1988, it was, I think it was... Was it Warehouser? It might have been Warehouser. It was another lumber company, and it was a really nice new building. And so, it was left out. Well, now, you know, 25 years later, those buildings that were nice at that time could use some help now. So, now, we went back and looked at those gaps that were in the district, and we started to fill those in.
Right. I think if I'm correct, the question was basically the public comment portion. And does that satisfy?
Is participation citizens in the process of improvement?
Is that simply the people who are affected and we reach out to them? Or should there have been a public comment time?
I think in amendments of this kind, when it is... They're really only... They're changing how their financing works. They did that in February. And this one, they're only adding property and to implement that. The scope of the amendment and the... What they were doing and the impact was so small that the feeling was that the public hearings... So, this is a public hearing that was on. All residents, people will receive a notice to be involved at the public hearing that goes to the city council, that those suffice for that public comment. Because they... People could come in. The Urban Renewal Agency, people could have come in at that point and provided public comments. So, they were all meetings that were noticed and allowed people to comment, so...
To be part of the planning process, not just the approval process.
Correct. So, people could come tonight and recommend that something be changed, and it could still be changed. They could recommend at the hearing that something be changed. I've had sometimes people come in and say, "I'd really want my property in." And the city council from a hearing will say, "Let's go ahead and add that property in." So, there's still opportunity, not just to say yes or no, but to say, "I think this should happen or that should happen."
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions? Then...
The reason I propose a motion is the actual language in the statute uses a specific word which is conform. So, a lot of times, people want to try to use other language. But my attorney tells me that if you do a motion and it has that word conformance in, that is the best way to do this, to comply with the statute. So, if you agree, this would be the potential motion, which is the proposed 2014 substantial amendment to the year 2000 Development Plan is in conformance with the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan. And the Plan Commission forwards the amendment with this finding to the city council for their review.
Thoughts? Do you agree with the potential motion?
I had a chance to read through half of it.
Yeah, yeah. I know this will go to the city council too. And I mean, it's just easy just to go, "Well, all right. Let's throw it in their court and let them work through it, and we can... Hopefully, we didn't do anything wrong here." I don't have a big problem with asking for this motion. Does any... Any of the commissioners have any...
I'll actually move a motion to recommend to council what has been read.
All right. Is that satisfactory? Or do I need to read this potential motion?
I think it's fine.
Fine, just to go with the motion we have, or I need to read it and have...
Yes, our attorney disagrees.
I guess I just, if you have something prepared and it uses the magic words that we're looking for, I'd read what was prepared.
Fantastic. That's all I'm asking for here. Okay, so we have a potential motion. Proposed 2014 substantial amendment to the year... Sorry? All right. The person making the motion?
The potential motion. The proposal, the 2014 substantial amendment to the year 2000 Development Plan is in conformance with the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan. And the Planning Commission forwards the amendment with this finding to the city council for review.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, and this is just a voice vote. It's fine? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Thank you very much. Appreciate your patience during that little bit there. All right. Then we move on to here at File AP 2014-01, C. Gypsy Condominium Association. This is a continuing motion or continuing deliberation. So, this tape, then this is what I've got here? This prior to or during deliberations you gave me?
Right. What I've given you is just this... The script from last time where you left off.
Okay. So, prior to or during deliberations, commission may consult with city staff and the city attorney... That's the stuff I'm not supposed to read. Or do not ask staff or legal counsel for new evidence. Does the city attorney or staff have any comments concerning legal issues raised during these proceedings? Instructions on the applicable law? Or legal advice concerning the application of the law to the evidence in the record?
I think I can get a little bit of advice. Richard has some comments as well. Again, this is the portion where you're in deliberations. You can hear from your staff. You can hear from your legal counsel. You can't hear from anyone else. The record is closed. Hearing is closed. The record is closed. We can't give you additional facts, but we can help you apply the facts to the law. So, I guess I'd start with this is a quasi-judicial application. In this kind of a proceeding, you are applying the existing law. You are not examining the law and thinking about amending the law. You're not creating law. This is simply that part of your duties, which is applying the facts in the record to the applicable criteria in the code. So, you read certain required statements where you advise the people coming to the podium and testifying that they should direct their testimony toward the applicable approval criterion or the other criterion that they believe is applicable. So, when we talk about applying the law, we're talking about the approval criterion. Staff has, you know, in the staff report, identified the provisions of 1772-090, which have to do with non-conforming signs. I don't think there's any real debate here about whether or not this is a non-conforming sign. A nonconformity is basically something that was legal when it was originally constructed. And then, the law has changed and such that it could not be approved today. In this case, I believe the record reflects that the sign was replaced in 1994. I believe that was the third time it was replaced. And in 1997, I believe the code was amended to state that you cannot have a sign on an undeveloped lot in the general commercial zone. Correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, but I think that's what makes it a nonconformity. So, with it being a nonconformity, then the provisions of 090 apply. And in the staff report, staff talked about the application of 090. Specifically talked about A and C. A being repair and C being essentially excessive repair. During the hearing, during the discussion, questioning of the people that have come up, two of you, and I don't apologize, I don't recall which two of you, appear to be identifying subsection B is also applying. And if you look at 090B, that is the section that talks about replacement. And I'll just read it here. Nonconforming signs. Nonconforming signs are not subject to the provisions of Chapter 1764. Nonconforming signs are subject to the following provisions. A, maintenance repairs and changing of sign faces where no structural alterations are made or allowed. B, signs and sign structures which are moved, replaced, or structurally altered shall be brought into conformance with the current sign regulations. And then, C is where the cost of repair of a nonconforming sign exceeds fifty percent of the cost of replacing the sign with a conforming sign. The sign must be brought into conformance with the provisions of this code. So, while I understand staff has identified the fifty percent of zero argument, I think that at least two of you pointed to B during the hearing. And basically, in that provision, talks about signs and sign structures. And talked about moved. Somewhere in the application materials, there was a reference to the proposal that the sign had to be moved, replaced, or structurally altered. So, I'm just putting it out there that I believe that some of you identified subsection B as also being applicable. Now, during the testimony, there were a couple other things that we should talk about. One was definition, a distinction that was made between the definition of sign and definition of sign structure. And that doesn't matter if you use B. I think that might have been part of what was happening. Someone appeared to be arguing that, "Well, we're talking about replacing the sign structure, not replacing the sign." The sign being what I think was called the can during the hearing. And I'm not actually sure that they weren't proposing to replace the sign can. But at least at the hearing, the assertion was it was the sign structure, that rusty thing that you have a picture of in the record, that basically one tube goes into another tube, kind of ill structure that was... Bottom one was really completely rusted out. So, B would be applicable if we're only talking about sign structures. I also wanted to point out that there was... Legal counsel mentioned a couple cases. Those cases, one had to do with Article 1, Section 8, and having to do with speech. And the other one was just an allegation about a takings claim. So, on the speech issue, basically, you can't make distinctions based on content in your sign ordinance. So, one of the cases, Outdoor Media, talked about making distinctions between on-premise signs and off-premise signs. And you can have an on-premise sign so long as the content only talks about what's for sale. You know, you can, for example, your gas station could say "gas station" on the sign, but it can't say "Eat at Joe's 10 miles down the road." And that is an example of content-based regulation. We don't have that in our code. So, I don't see any constitutional content-based issue here. Also, the constitutional takings claim, which was, you know, "I have been denied all reasonable use of my property." Well, there's only one use that has been applied for here, and that was a replacement of a sign, reconstruction of a sign. That's not a denial... If this is denied, that's not a denial of all use of the property. They haven't made application for any other use. So, how could you argue that there's been a denial of all use? Yes, the code does prohibit a sign on an undeveloped lot and has... In the general commercial zone. And it has done so since 1997. And they've had many years of use. So, there's been no denial up to this point of that use. Further, there's other uses that are permitted in the general commercial zone, and they haven't applied for any. So, those two constitutional issues, I don't see any issue there. Feel free to ask me questions about it. But there were some other discussion about the interpretation of your own code and how you would interpret one section of the code... you would interpret one section of the code and then interpret the other. Well, the structure of your code is like most codes. In the beginning, unlike 050, is entitled prohibited signs. Prohibited signs include the following. G, signs on undeveloped lots in GC and in other zones. There's a whole list of them there. So there's a prohibition. Generally, you like to lead with A, purpose, then definitions, then prohibitions. You tell people what they can't do right up front. Then you generally tell them what they can do. So in 17060, there's a list of signs that are allowed by type, you know, signs attached to buildings, freestanding signs. And counsel for the appellant basically went to 1772-060, that second part that tells you what you can do, and said, here, the second type of sign, freestanding sign, says right there, "one sign shall be permitted for each lot with a street frontage of 50 or more linear feet." Well, and he said, I believe, "I want you to recognize a mandatory provision there." Yes, it does say that, but it was preceded in the code with the prohibitions on things that you can't have. So I think that that interpretation is amending the prohibition section. So where it says prohibited signs include the following, signs on undeveloped lots in GC and in LIS, I think counsel for the appellant was saying that section really reads prohibited signs include the following, signs except for a single freestanding sign permitted in 1772-060A2, signs on undeveloped lots. So I think he was amending that section. Well, you're not entitled to amend this section with that kind of language. I think it has a natural flow to it. It's like every other ordinance I've ever read, prohibitions come first. Then what's not prohibited, there's specific permitted things that follow. So I would not propose adopting the proposed interpretation that was offered by legal counsel. And then I guess the, what is not a criterion? Sometimes we have arguments that basically are not criteria, and we're hearing an argument, and I thought that during the hearing, we had a very strong argument for gotcha as an approval criterion. And in that case, several of the people that spoke talked about how it wasn't fair, then I believe counsel even said that appellants, you know, followed the instructions of the city and then were punished with a gotcha for doing so. And I don't think that was either factually true or legally relevant, and I'll tell you why. In Oregon, a participant in a local land use proceeding must ascertain for himself, from the local code, what it must do, what the person must do to protect its rights. So, and that's Columbia River Television, and City of Grants Pass versus Josephine County, and Campy versus City of Salem, there's a whole line of cases, up to you to ascertain what's required from the code. Now, there was an allegation that the planning director, in an email regarding, which was, I can't remember date, March 5th, basically assured the appellants that they would be able to reconstruct the sign. Now, you can read the emails that are in the record, but I don't think factually they do that, nor could they legally do that. The only way to approve an application is to submit an application with an application fee, and staff is prohibited by code from even processing an application if the fee hasn't been paid. So sending an email certainly couldn't grant an approval or lead someone to believe that there's an approval. His email wasn't even encouraging. He had previously advised the applicant, as he testified, that they probably wouldn't get approval of a replacement. And there's, his email did kind of say that removing the sign before the advancing storm would not make a difference or prejudice their applications. And that, there's an easy explanation for that. There is no approval criterion here for replacing your sign that says your sign must be standing at the time you submit your application. So it's not an approval criterion. There was some big deal made about the letter that was introduced. The letter was the formal nuisance unsafe sign letter that followed the emails, which came, simply came before, and that was pursuant to 1772-080C. So again, it's not really an issue, it's not an approval criterion. There is no gotcha standard, there is no, you took down the sign, therefore you somehow lost some rights. Just taking down a sign didn't make any difference whatsoever. And I guess I'll also say that even if the planning director's email was, had said, that's okay, you could take down the sign, you'll get approval, he couldn't waive with that email a mandatory approval criterion. And as I mentioned, two of you mentioned subsection B, which says signs and sign structures which are moved, replaced, or structurally altered shall be brought into conformance with the current sign regulations. Shall, mandatory, mandatory provision, can't be altered by staff. And in a Lincoln City case, and I missed the citation when I copied it, but it says, intervener further contends that petitioner's reliance on a misstatement by the planning director does not excuse an untimely filed notice of intent to appeal. Intervener cites numerous cases confirming that reliance on erroneous information from a local government employee does not relieve a party from complying with statutory or local code requirements. Columbia River Television versus Monmouth County, City of Grants Pass versus Josephine County, Campy versus Salem, Kellogg Lake Friends versus Clackamas County. Even if there's economic harm from, let's assume that the planning director made statements that were wrong, and that they relied on them. There's some cases, Loosely versus City of Salem, where a planning, an assistant planner approved something at the counter, DMV application sign off as to land use, the applicant relied upon that, went and bought the property, turned out that the planner at the counter missed the fact that there was an overlay zone on that property, not just the underlying zone, which prohibited the use, I think it was a car sale, you know, retail car sale, and it was actually prohibited. They sued and said, we've been damaged financially, you owe us money, city planner relied on you, you didn't hold up your end. And if you hire a planner, or an engineer, and your engineer or planner doesn't do a good job, you can sue them, and their professional liability insurance will defend. If you come to the counter and you get for, I think in this case, the application was $25 or $50, and you get the sign off from planning on something, they owe no special duty to you. Their duty is like you or planner or your engineer that you hire. Their duty is to the local government body. So even if there was economic harm to you, you can't rely upon a mistake by a planning firm, even if you're going to try to claim damages. And that's how far, and this is, again, this is the, not me talking, this is the court. There was another not criteria argument that came in, and I'll just mention it. There was a discussion about, we should have, because this, a permit application fee of $50 was paid in 19, this is in the record, in 1994, 1995, when the permit was issued, and for that $50, we should have inspected that sign, which I believe the allegation was, that the eight-inch things were in the 10-inch things, or something, you know, engineering-wise, the sleeves weren't matched or something, and they weren't deep enough. We, when we issue a permit, we are not guaranteeing the work of your contractor. All we're doing is reviewing it against the code. And in that case, it was probably just a zoning compliance check and a building permit application. So those, again, are issues that came in, but there is no approval criterion there. They were kind of, when you hear these hearings, you sometimes get things that aren't on point. I'm just telling you, usually when I write findings, I say, here are the approval criteria in, here's your analysis of the approval criteria in, here are the other allegations made, and here's why those things aren't relevant. So I think that's my list. I guess, Richard, is there anything about the application of the subsection A and subsection C, it's pretty much handled in the staff report? That came up about, no, no, look at the definition of sign and the definition of sign structure. You could argue that causes a problem for A and C. I think sign is probably being used in a generic sense in A and C, but if you were to just say, oh, it's the sign structure definition makes an issue of it, I think B, as two of you identified during the hearing, still stops the replacement of the members. And I guess there was testimony, and it's your job, and my job is only to help you apply the facts to the law. So I know I'm talking, but I, this is your responsibility to weigh this, I'm just pointing out some things. There was some testimony about, all we have to do is replace the sleeves that go into the posts. If you look at the pictures in the record, I don't think that's a fair statement. I think that more than just replacing the sleeves that go in, if you look at the rusted-out sleeves that are there, that they're talking about would have to go in. In terms of what is the distinction between, is it replacement? Is it really a structural alteration? Or is it just mere repair, a little part of the application?
But under the logic of the 50% of nothing is nothing, if we apply that, it doesn't matter, we talk about repair or replacement. Nothing is going to happen to these signs, right?
Yeah. In the Brineer case, the city council talked about the application of B, replacement, and they also talked about, yeah, B, excessive repair. So, you know, all you need is one basis, one thing that they don't meet for denial. When you have two things, that's just a, you know, harder burden for the applicant. And I think you probably have two here, but you have to weigh the evidence and apply the facts to the law.
Well, for myself, I'm not comfortable making a decision about the structure. I have no knowledge of metal instruction and...
I can add to that. I have some. 1995, because I own a design firm, the criteria for design was 90 miles an hour wind loading for signs here. And in 2012, it became 110 miles an hour. So the structure was there and the sleeves were there, wouldn't meet the current code more than likely. They were designed for 90 miles an hour, not the 110 that's required today.
I want to caution that we, you know, we can't add additional facts in the record at this point, so...
Mr. Chair, I do have a question. About the lot, Sea Gypsy owns that lot, correct?
Yes.
The condominium association.
So, and that also be considered as an addition to what, of their business, since they own both? That considered as separate?
Separate undeveloped lot, if that's what you're telling, it's not, you know, the Sea Gypsies is over a block away. If you're thinking it was like accessory structure to their business, I don't think that would, that would apply in this case. It should be on the same lot, or a lot that you could consider to be the same. In other words, if the Sea Gypsy was adjacent, you know, on the adjacent lot, we could, under certain conditions, just ignore the lot line, but we don't have that situation here.
Well, what you're talking about is...
It is a crossed inlet from the Sea Gypsy. I mean, it's a, there's a road in between the Sea Gypsy and that sign called inlet, right?
It's Highway 101 and then Second Street.
There's an inlet also in between? The Sea Gypsy on the shore?
Then Highway 101.
Right. So there's roads in between?
Yes.
There's no way it's abutting or close.
I guess, I guess what you're looking at is that the signs on undeveloped lots, prohibition, and that the undeveloped lot is, you know, a lot is undeveloped unless, and then you're talking about business operations are conducted on the lot, is that what you were thinking? Yeah. And I think staff's telling you that to say that the business operations of the Sea Gypsy are conducted on that lot would be a stretch. Again, it's your...
But it's a possibility.
It's your job to apply the facts to the law. That has an and in it. And the lot either contains development that has been approved through site plan review pursuant to 1752-240, or contains development that would have been required to go through the site plan review, or site plan review had existed at the time. So I don't think we have anything that addresses that second criterion in the record. And I'm a little uncomfortable about the mention of the wind loading issue, so I would ask that you just disregard that and not take it into consideration, but since it did come in, I think you should announce that if the applicant wants to reopen the hearing to rebut it, then we can accept a request to that.
When do I need to make that request?
Well, again, this is deliberations, and we had the introduction of something that wasn't previously mentioned in the record. Granted, it's probably a matter of law and not a matter of fact, but it just makes me a little uncomfortable. At this point, I would just go with the instruction that not to consider any discussion of wind loading in your deliberations.
Okay. So we have that instruction. And I brought up, what I brought up, not for any help on it, other than just to say, we've been directed to look at pictures that seem obvious to some people, and I'm just saying, I'm not comfortable making that decision. That I can see that there's something wrong, I can see rust, I can see chip paint, but I can't see anything else, because I don't have any knowledge of that guy.
You do have, in the record, introduced by the appellant's attorney, the nuisance, the formal nuisance letter that declared that the sign was unsafe. You have the testimony during the hearing, First Gentleman that spoke about the sign, they agreed when they got...
I'm not arguing that at all. I'm not arguing that at all. I just didn't want to be directed to a picture and say, I'm making my decision on that picture. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Chair, the owner of that sign company also stated that, that the post is structured, and the structure would have to be replaced.
Not necessarily, no, sorry.
There's a couple of things I'd just like to add to what the city attorney said. You know, so I guess emphasize some things. I said it several times during the hearing, and I'll just reemphasize it again, that the fact that I told them to remove the sign, the fact the sign wasn't there anymore, had nothing to do with the decision about whether it could be rebuilt or replaced. I want to make that really clear. Had nothing to do with it. Sign there or not there did not make a difference. The argument that section 060 just says you're allowed a freestanding sign on a lot with a street frontage of 50 feet or more, as Mr. Appicello said, you've got to look at the whole ordinance. The section 050 right before this said that signs on undeveloped lots in GC and other zones are prohibited. And it's a sort of fundamental rule of statutory construction that every, every part of the ordinance has to mean something, it's there for a reason, you can't just ignore some part of it and focus on one part, you've got to look at the whole thing. Another example of that, for instance, we have a provision in the code that says the maximum building height in the city is 45 feet. And you could, if you stopped there, you could, you think you, like, can build buildings to 45 feet, but we have sections, other sections of the code that limit buildings, for instance, in residential zones to 35 feet, in tact to 38 feet. So you have to look at the ordinance as a whole, you can't just ignore something that you don't like, for example. I also would agree that the use of the sign in 090, use of the word sign, I think has to include the structure. Otherwise, you would have a situation where they can't replace the structure, but they could put the sign back, which is the piece of plastic that has... could put the sign back, which is the piece of plastic that has the word "Sea Gypsy" and an arrow on it, but they couldn't, they couldn't hold it up in any way. It just doesn't make sense. So you have to, I think you have to think, in the context, that particular section means the whole thing, the sign face itself as well as the structure. There also was, was something about the, the sign should be grandfathered, and in fact, it was grandfathered. That's what, being a legal nonconforming sign is a grandfathered sign. But the nonconforming section says you can't replace them. The idea, again, for nonconforming uses and structures, that they're supposed to go away over time. You can get your economic value out of them, but as we're seeing here, they eventually deteriorate and either, you know, go away on their own or in a windstorm, or they have to be removed because they're a danger, which is the situation we had here. That's what grandfathering is, it's not a license to do it forever, in, at least in the context of signs. It's, you get to, you get to keep doing what you were allowed, what you were authorized to do as being lawful, when the law changes, but eventually it's going to go away because of, you know, weather deterioration or what have you.
You know, I, I just, I would like to ask staff at some point that we could revisit this ordinance and go through it, because we have, on one hand, saying, you, taking it down is not going to affect your right to apply for repair or replacement, but there's no chance you are ever going to get that permit. But it doesn't say that, it says, "You can still do it, you can still give us your money, but you're never going to get it." And I just, I think it needs to be a little clearer that you will never have this happen.
Oh, that's limited to undeveloped lots.
Exactly. And, and, but that's the case, it will never happen. And I just think it should be clear to the person, "We're just pretending that we're going to listen to you. You're going to give us your check, and we're going to pretend, but it ain't going to happen." And that's all I'm saying, is I think we need to kind of clear that up a little bit. And then another thing is, I remember Commissioner Kidd brought up a, a case he had worked on or had been involved in on some city council or something, but basically his concern had been, when signs are getting to a point of deterioration, and the owners know that it's going to go, they're just going to keep them until they fall over or become a hazard, or until someone catches them and says, "Hey, you've got a problem, we need to take this down." Do we have something, some way that we can say, "This should never get to this point"?
There are, place like, Lake Oswego had a provision that basically said, "You can't have any pole signs anymore." And existing pole signs have to go away in, I think it was either seven or 10 years. And then, then at that point, every pole sign that's still up has to be taken down. So you can have an amortization period, essentially.
Amortization is very popular with signs, because the, or shorter amortization periods are popular with signs, because there is not as large an economic outlay for sign as there is for entire-
Right, I understand. I'm thinking more of the public safety aspect.
We have that provision in our code, and, and it was utilized in this case.
Yes, because we got lucky. This still could have blown down, and hurt someone, and nobody would have known about it. That's all I'm saying, is I think we need to look at that. It says, we've got to balance the, the life of the sign and the economic benefit to the owner versus the safety needs of the city, and say, citizens, and say, "Yeah, we need to jump on this a little earlier." Is that kind of clear?
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, all right.
Well, good enough for enforcement, which we only have two people.
Right.
Which also has to deal with VRDs.
Right. And that's what I'm saying, is I think we need to revisit this whole issue of, it's never going to come back, we're not going to allow it to be repaired or replaced on, in general commercial undeveloped lots. So why don't we just say, "Look, we need," and this is for further discussion, but I'd like to talk about that at some other point. So we don't keep doing this.
Right.
You proposing that we put a sunset ordinance on our asset stamps and thereby put on the depth of all signs?
I don't know if now's the time to do that, I just would like to visit it.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I generally, I, what happens when you have a quasi judicial hearing, where we're applying the existing law, sometimes you think, you know, "What, we should reexamine this law?" But it's really not the discussion to have during deliberations and inquiries. Afterward, you say, "Staff, I'd like to set a workshop and talk about this." So, see, this is the learning experience.
Well, then going back to the issue, is there any chance that the appellant can come back later at a different time and ask for a variance on this lot to construct a sign?
In, in response to the chair's concern about wording of things, I say, yes, they can come back, the chances of getting it would be pretty close to zero.
Typically, variances have to do with dimensional things, not use of prompt.
Okay. There's no chance they could come back?
Well, they could propose an amendment to the code to allow, I mean, we do know that if there is a provision of the code that's not allowing you from doing something, one means of addressing that is to request that that code section be amended. Now, that's an application fee and-
How big is, how big a lot are we talking about here?
I don't know. It was not in the record, I don't think so.
I don't know it's in the record. We can't accept any additional evidence.
Be nice to know.
It's not in the record.
Yep. We're going to leave it at that. Don't muddy this up anymore. All right. We could do that.
I don't know if I'll get a second. A move that we-
We have a motion to reopen. Do I need to put certain verbiage in that, just to reopen this hearing?
I would say that at this point, if you wanted to, under 197763, people can petition and ask for the hearing to be reopened, or the record to be reopened, but you've already closed the hearing and closed the record, and you've deliberated now and heard advice of staff and legal counsel. I wouldn't recommend it, but you can-
But my question was, basically, was that the verbiage we'd need for a motion?
Yeah. If you want to reopen the hearing and take additional testimony, then you would reopen the hearing, of course, you have not advertised this as a hearing. So if we do have reopen the hearing, you would need to allow for anyone else, that one, anyone opposed, to, I know that there are people here that are in favor, and they, maybe you want to hear what they have to say, but you're not going to hear from anybody that wants to rebut what they say. So you would need to leave the record open at a minimum after testimony.
Yes, I'm just trying to clarify the commissioner's motion. It was to reopen the hearing to take additional testimony. Is that satisfactory language to do what we want to do, or what he's asking to do?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's-
Okay, so we have a motion to reopen the hearing to take additional testimony, is there a second? Hearing none, then that's that. Okay, so where are we at then? Okay? Anyone else?
I, possible codes, don't see any way where it could be reopened. It is later on, changing the verbiage, as it reads right now, what we have to follow. That's why I was looking at developed lots, it's undeveloped unless business operates, that's why I'm just trying to see what is consistent with, you know, is it attached to Sea Gypsy? Is it part of their business? But if, you know, if it's a separation, no, it's not, it's just totally separate tax lot, they can't use it that way.
Further deliberations, questions, opinions? None? All right, where does that leave us then, please?
I'll make a motion to deny Sea Gypsy appeal.
You have a motion to deny the Sea Gypsy's appeal? Do I need to give a number for this?
Number 2014-1, appeal number 2014-1.
File number?
It's fine.
Okay, so file number APP2014-01. So we have a motion to deny the appeal. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, and just again, voice, aye, nay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none. Motion denied. Or, I'm sorry, appeal denied.
So the staff will bring back written findings at your next meeting for, unless you, you haven't prepared them for-
I haven't prepared them.
Okay. So at your next meeting, we'll bring back written findings for your signature.
All right, thank you. All right, and then this is where we come to the PUD 2014-01 and 2014-01 annex, and we're going to take a motion to, do I need separate motions in each one?
Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion, then, I'm looking for a motion on file PUD 2014-01. Lincoln Palisades preliminary master plan for planned unit development, the applicant has requested a continuance to Tuesday, September 16th, 2014, so for a motion to-
I motion we allow the continuance.
Motion, second?
All second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Files annex 2014-01, CPA slash Z 2014-01, and PUD 2014-02. Logan Park requests for annexation, rezoning, and preliminary master plan for planned unit development. The applicant has requested a continuance to Tuesday, August 19th, 2014. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Old business, none scheduled, new business, none scheduled, reports and comments, community development director.
Last night, the city council acted on the proposed amendments to the multifamily RM zone standards and went along with your recommendations. They did show substantial interest in taking a closer look at the RM zone section in general, and asked us to bring that back sooner rather than later, so we will be working on that soon. I want to update you on that. I think that's all I have.
Yeah, I was very proud of that, by the way. It was, it was nice to hear them not tear something apart that came from planning. So, good job, everyone. Our city attorney? Nothing. Planning commissioners?
I'd like to bring back zoning issues on signs, and work on maybe changing some of the verbiage of that.
Anything in particular?
Partly where the confusion is, what you were talking about.
Okay. So for conforming, non-conforming, and repair and replacement? Yeah, I would definitely want to discuss this further.
Yeah, I think that language that was concerning was actually in my email, it's not in the ordinance, and it was unfortunate wording on my part, but-
Well, I guess what I'm, it's, it's that, the calculation that we're using, that we're applying, we're saying, "You can't possibly spend 50% because 50% is zero-zero," and-
What you're really saying is that in, where we have A, B, and C now, maybe we need a D that says, "If your lot is undeveloped, none of these above apply to you, there is no reconstruction."
You're out of luck.
Yeah, and that's fine, that's clear to, to the people that-
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I think it's one of these issues, just like we did density, there was confusion in that, you know, we've got to clear that up. I think we're in the same instance here with this.
Right. Because I just, I just, you know, this is the second one I've dealt with, and it's very, very frustrating to me. So the more we can do to clear this up, the better, I think, and make it understandable to everybody. I don't have anything in particular. All right, well, we have public comments and non-agenda items, not involving a public hearing, please limit comments to three minutes. Nobody? All right, then, future agenda items and next meeting?
Next meeting is Tuesday, August 5th at 6:00 p.m. We'll have the final order in this matter, and maybe some special discussions.
And where, where are we at then with Commissioner Kidd? Is, where is he at in the, is he?
I, I don't know if he, has he, has he formally resigned?
I don't think so, but I think that will happen soon.
Technically, we don't have a vacancy right now.
Okay, that's my question, thank you. All right, well, if that's it, the meeting is adjourned.